This is the July 12th Park and Rec Commission meeting, and we will call the meeting to order. Rebecca, if you can do the roll call.
Yep. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Charlie? Is absent. Commissioner Ellison?
Here.
Commissioner Koenig?
Here.
Commissioner Miles? She will be joining us shortly. Commissioner Phipps?
Here.
And Commissioner McPherson is absent. And Vice Chair Janowski?
Here. All right. Someone asked about saluting the flag, and just as background, that was something we did consistently when we met in person. But since we don't have a flag, and there's a protocol to do the pledge of allegiance only when you have a flag, we're going to wait and start that back up when we meet in person, just as a, you know, FYI for people. At this time, we will open up our meeting for public comment. If any members of the public would like to comment, feel free.
I am not seeing any raised hands, and check the email. We did not receive any emails to public comment for open time.
Okay, so we can close public comment. And moving right along. Item 3A is introducing our new commissioners, Emily Charlie and Shannon Koenig. Emily is not able to be with us tonight, I don't believe, but Shannon is here. And we just want to give them a big welcome and say that we're looking forward to working with you, Shannon and Emily. And Shannon, if you want to say anything by, you know, way of an introduction, feel free.
Sure. Well, thank you all for certainly the opportunity to participate. I have been born and raised in Larksford, Corder Madera, and have experienced Parks and Recs from a childhood perspective, as well as now as a parent perspective and community member. So I'm really excited to be a part of this and continue to make our town as great as it is and provide services for everyone in the community.
Welcome. Great. Thank you, and welcome to the commission.
Thank you.
Item 3B is honoring our outgoing commissioners, Nate Blumgren and Pat Ravazio. We want to recognize all of their hard work. Nate served on the commission for several years, including the past two as chair. We really appreciated his leadership and his good judgment. He played an important role in projects, including the creation of the Dog Park, the update of the Hoops Court, and the remodel of Scott Hollow. And he was really a valuable member of our commission. Pat also has done incredible advocate advocacy work for Corder Madera and its residents for the many years she's lived here, not only through her work on Park and Rec, but on the Community Foundation and other groups. Most recently, she kicked off the important master planning process for Parks and Rec. Pat has really brought an energy and a passion for the town to everything that she's done, and we hope that she's going to continue that and to bring those qualities to our town going forward. So thank you to both of them.
Vice Chair Janowski, we did receive an email from Pat that she was hoping we could read into the record, and she apologized for not being able to be here this evening to make the statement in person, but it is for an exciting reason. She wanted to let the commission know that as of 10:30 this morning, she and Bob are grandparents. And since she will be going into the city this evening to meet her new grandson, she will miss tonight's meeting and wanted me to read this into the record. She wants to wish, I want to wish the new commissioners the best of luck and say that I'm very glad that we have parents of young children stepping up. Please note that I intend to remain involved in the projects I have been working on, including the long-term master plan, the community center remodel and expansion, the future Park Madera Center and Town Plaza, and the creation of a new community garden in Corder Madera. I hope the commission will continue to prioritize important and urgent projects like new restrooms for Town Park, maybe by simply finding a way to open up the lobby doors so that residents can stop in and use the nice clean already existing restrooms, just like we used to. Even before COVID, our community center had been close to the public, but I believe our community deserves and needs to have an open community center. We all remember how great it felt to open the community center when the power went out, when we became genuinely valuable to our community. I hope we can achieve the fulfilling sense of service on a daily basis by opening at least the lobby and the restrooms to the community. Thank you so much for your kind invitation tonight. I'll be sure to watch the recording of the meeting. Wishing all of you the best of luck, and thank you to staff for all of your hard work in making great things happen in Corder Madera. It's one of the greatest small towns on the planet, and it has truly been a privilege and a pleasure to serve sincerely, Pat Ravazio.
That's really nice. Thank you for reading that. All right. Moving along to number four, reorganization of the commission. With Nate no longer here, we have an opening at chair, and we want to discuss commission leadership. We'd like to propose a slightly different leadership structure with two co-chairs rather than a chair and a vice chair. We think that that might broaden our commission leadership and also provide backup coverage. So at this time, I'd like to open it up for nominations for co-chairs.
Like, just can you give a little bit more insight? You've been vice chair for a while as to what the, what the kind of how that change will affect the commission a little bit more specifically, kind of what the difference is, not that opposed, but I think we useful for the broader commission to understand some of the things.
Sure. I don't think, I mean, to be honest, I really don't think there is much of a difference. I mean, the vice chair, as you know, I've always stepped in and run the meetings when our chair isn't available. We just think that it might be more balanced to just have two people kind of sharing the main priority or, you know, the main leadership rather than one chair and one vice chair. That was, I think that was kind of the thought process behind it.
And then in addition to kind of running the meetings, there's a relationship between the chairs and the executive group?
Generally, the chair and the vice chair meet with with staff. And I think maybe going forward, Fred Casisa is going to be in on that meeting. So that's just usually to work on setting the agenda prior to our meeting monthly.
And so are we looking for, you have proposed a nomination before of two co-chairs instead of a vice chair. Are we looking for a second? Is that the part of crawl?
I think, um, yes. We need, we need to have nominations of two people that
Right.
or two co-chairs.
Go ahead, Ann.
What?
Do we have to approve the restructuring first?
Oh.
Uh, we actually talked to the town staff, and there was not a problem in their mind of having two co-chairs instead of a chair and a vice chair. Yeah, I don't think that actually has ever really been set in any formal.
It doesn't have to be formal going forward, Vice Chair Janowski. If you want to give this a try for a year, and if it doesn't work out like you anticipate, you can always go back. But we want to help you be successful in your leadership, however, whatever formation that takes.
Well, I'm, I'm in support of that structure that helps those who are in those positions to be able to better serve our commission and run it. I, I would hope and I would like to propose or make a motion that that Vice Chair Janowski continue as a co-chair. And I would like to also nominate Commissioner Brown. Is that what you're looking for?
That's not, yes, that, thank you. Appreciate that. So I guess, is there a second for that motion? And then we could call for a vote?
I will second that motion unless there are other nominations that. Second that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Miles. Rebecca, do you want to call for the vote?
Um, yes, we just have to take public comment first.
Oh, sorry. I need to open another public comment.
And I am not seeing any raised hands, and we did not receive any email to public comment.
Okay, so we can close public comment, and now we can call for the vote.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Charlie is absent. Commissioner Ellison?
Yes.
Commissioner Koenig?
Yes.
Commissioner Miles?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson is absent. And Vice Chair Janowski?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations to the two new co-chairs.
Okay, thank you, everybody. And just to show our balanced approach to leadership, at this time, I am going to turn it over to Commissioner Brown to handle item number five and going forward for the rest of the meeting.
Okay, Rebecca, I'll also count on you to make sure that we stay on process. So the next item is the consent calendar. We only have the draft approval of the draft minutes on the consent calendar, but just a reminder that consent calendar are items that are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion, though any member of the commission, the staff, or the public can ask that one of the items from the consent calendar be removed for further discussion. So at this time, since all we have is item 5A, approval of draft minutes, do we have any discussion on the minutes? Rebecca?
Thank you, Co-Chair Brown. Um, I did receive an email from Commissioner Brown who wanted to let me know about some typographical errors that she did find in the draft of the minutes, and they're not substantive, but they do require correcting, so I don't have my email open. Do you remember off the top of your head which ones they were? I can look for the email real quick.
And there was, one was a simple typo, one was just a reference to other groups that were in support of a specific item and mentioned the Lions Club twice, and I wanted to be sure that that wasn't leaving a different group out, and I couldn't remember the discussion from the last commission meeting. So I thought that that was worth going back and checking or eliminating the redundancy in that particular item.
There it is. Yes. Um, so just because of that aspect, I wanted to make sure that, that when the commission took a vote, it was as to approve the minutes as amended instead of.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second of?
Great. Rebecca, can we take a vote then?
Yes. Just checking the attendee list to see if there's any public comment on this item. And I'm not seeing any raised hands, and we cannot receive any emails. Okay. Commissioner Charlie is absent. Commissioner Ellison?
Yes.
Commissioner Koenig?
Yes.
Commissioner Miles?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson is absent. Co-Chair Brown?
Yes.
And Co-Chair Janowski?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we'll move on to business items. We have three on the calendar today. The first one is 6A, discussion and possible action to form subcommittees of the Parks and Rec Commission, and appointment of commissioners to serve on any subcommittees formed. And Rebecca submitted a staff report on this item. Do you like to summarize that?
Thank you, Chair Brown. This this recommendation is being brought forward from a discussion that we had with the executive committee. Looking at ways to get more involvement and engagement from the commission on various aspects of commission leadership and engagement in the community, and also an opportunity to further engage the community with the work of the commission. And this was driven by the work that the Subcommittee on the Town Park Master Planning Process did, and how successful that was with not only engaging the community, but also working on things outside of the commission to elevate and bring forward items to the commission in a way that was already ready for the commission to adhere here and work on. What we're looking for today is direction to form several subcommittees and then appoint commission members to serve on those subcommittees. And we would like to reevaluate the membership on the master plan subcommittee, and there is an opening for at least one new person to join that committee. We would also like to potentially form the community engagement subcommittee and the programming subcommittee, and then invite three commissioners to volunteer to serve on each of those committees as well. And the master plan subcommittee will work to carry out the work which was formed, which is to engage the community in the master planning process and work through the consultants to identify priorities that will come out of the community survey that is currently still being tabulated. And then work through the community engagement process and how hopefully in-person workshops, as well as virtual workshop option, and engage the community on what the priorities are that are coming out of the survey. And then take those priorities and work on budgeting for them and the planning process related to fleshing out those priorities and then presenting them to the council in the spring for inclusion in the the budgeting and capital improvements process. And then when the work of the, leading up to the survey and the master planning process is completed, then it is anticipated that this, this committee would pivot and become an annual priorities and planning subcommittee to continue the work of it going forward to make sure that all the priorities elevated through the master planning process are shepherded through to completion and that new priorities are identified as this process continues. So we anticipate that this will be a very busy and active subcommittee for quite a while going forward. The other subcommittees being proposed are the community engagement subcommittee, which could be an exciting opportunity to form a workshopping process with community outreach and involving stakeholders in the community with your subcommittee. So the subcommittee would work with staff to build out opportunities, communications, and outreach to engage the community on an ongoing basis. The subcommittee is anticipated to provide additional visibility in the community and would provide representation of voices back to the commission at the monthly meetings and other engagement opportunities. The subcommittee would also be responsible for working with staff to develop and implement new, the new community recognition program, such as the Volunteer of the Year and the Citizen of the Year, et cetera, and will be responsible for building ongoing communication and partnership with other community organizations. So basically, it's a way to reach out to the community and involve more voices in the planning process so that we, that you as a commission feel like you're representing a greater and more broad perspective of the community. The programming subcommittee that is also being proposed would help identify opportunities for new programs while evaluating existing programs in order to determine priorities. This group can serve as a complement to staff to look at best practices and innovations in other communities and propose new programming for all age ranges within the community. So this evening, we're asking the commission to discuss the possibility of forming these subcommittees. And if it's supported, the commission would, through the chair, formalize appointments of no more than three commissioners to each of the subcommittees established. Each commissioner is encouraged to participate on at least one subcommittee. And then going forward, we feel that the subcommittee membership could be evaluated annually, almost like what we do at the town council level, where each year when the council reorganizes, appointments are reshuffled as interests arise. Also, it's a great way to mix up the participation and get new voices heard on each of these subcommittees. New subcommittees could also be evaluated and added annually as, as needed if the executive committee determines there's a need for a new subcommittee. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or if you want to discuss the work of these subcommittees, we can flush that out a little bit as well. Thank you.
So why don't we start with any questions that commissioners may have, and then we'll open it up for public comment, and then we'll bring it back for discussion. So are there any questions from the commissioners on this proposal or the specific subcommittees that are being proposed?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I was just, it's three people, three commissioners per committee, and then would we, would you expect that people would be on two, possibly on two committees? Or do we have enough commissioners where we need three and everybody's only on one?
I don't know if we have nine members.
The, the purpose behind no more than three was that so we don't run into quorum issues. If you have more than a quorum of a commission sitting on a subcommittee, then it's a brown act body that is no longer a subcommittee. You have eight commissioners, including the youth commissioners, so we don't anticipate a need to have more than one commissioner serve on more than one. One person wouldn't need to likely serve on, on two. But unless there isn't interest to have each commissioner serve on at least one commission, most commissioners will just have one importance.
Thank you. May I ask, previously, obviously, subcommittees were not a standard of practice. Were decisions just made as a whole commission? Or recommendations made for each matter?
Generally, I would say yes, that's true. But we have, we did have a programming subcommittee before, and we've always had the executive advisory. So we've, we, it's not without precedent to have subcommittees that meet outside of our regular commission meetings.
Any other questions before we go to public comment? Okay, Rebecca, can you check and see if we have anybody from the public that would like to comment on this?
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. I am not seeing any raised hands, and we did not receive any emails to public comment.
Okay, then we can bring this back for a more full discussion and possible self-nominations for the subcommittees that have been suggested. Would it be helpful, Rebecca, to first maybe assess people's interest in the three different subcommittees that have been proposed and see if we have more people than we want to put on any one subcommittee for each one, or ensure that we have at least two that are interested in each one?
Yes, that sounds like a good way to approach that. I also wanted to say that you could potentially have an alternate in the wings in case the original appointments don't work out as anticipated. I would advise that the alternate not attend the meetings unless the alternate needs to be placed on the subcommittee, but we can work through the town's Zoom accounts, or if you meet in person, if you took notes, you'd be able to get an alternate up to speed if that alternate needed to join the subcommittee at some point during the course of your work. But for starters, let's, we can see if we have at least three people.
And since we're missing two commissioners tonight, it seems like we should look to finalize subcommittee appointments, perhaps at our next meeting, after they've had an opportunity to express where they would like to participate as well. So they're not excluded from the committees that might have a lot of interest.
Louise, could you help, help for the, for the newer folks and for folks who haven't been on a subcommittee, talk about a little bit about what that commitment looks like and how the subcommittees will work with bringing things back to the commission at large?
Sure, I can definitely speak to what we've done on the master plan subcommittee, and I don't know that that necessarily is the model for how active the other subcommittees would be. I think there's an opportunity for each subcommittee to craft their charter and work with the executive committee and staff to ensure that those priorities are on point, but establish the scope that makes sense for the subcommittee to take on. I recognize this is a, you know, above and beyond both the commission work that you've committed to and also your, your life. So I think it needs to be balanced. But on the master plan subcommittee, we were in a cadence of meeting weekly in order to just make sure that we were moving the significant projects along, because we had some time pressures to get things like the community survey finalized. And we had issued an RFP to select a consultant to help us with that process. So we were accountable to some external dates and constituencies that required us to kind of do that, that cadence of work every week. And Aline, remind me, I think we, generally, we had an hour on our calendar every week, and then we would do some of our work, draft surveys and things like that through email. My expectation is, for instance, on the community engagement subcommittee, if people were interested in participating on that, you may come with connections already to other community groups within Corder Madera that you can help to connect the dots so that we're having more of a two-way and ongoing dialogue with those groups. The work to identify a pro, a process for Volunteer of the Year and Citizen of the Year, I think is going to just take some focused work around what other communities do, best practices, you know, what, what feels right for our community. But I can't imagine that that would be anything more than, you know, a couple of hours a month on that kind of committee. I think you could limit it. You could build your, your scope based on the time that you have to commit. And the programming subcommittee, I would defer to Rochelle here and staff. But in addition to helping to provide feedback and perspective to the programming that we have in place, I think that the augmentation opportunity here is to go out and look at what other communities are doing, and that's somewhat self-paced. You know, you can take that on as much as you want based on the time you have. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody else have any other thoughts about these as subcommittee focus areas or anything else that we should consider before we assess people's interest in serving on various subcommittees? Does this feel like a, does this feel like the right thing for us to do as a commission? Is everybody feeling like getting involved in a specific area of focus is going to be helpful, satisfying, productive?
I think it's going to be helpful, and I actually like that we're going to be getting the entire commission involved in the process, not just with the commission meetings. My only hope is that there's some flexibility with meeting times and things like that around work schedules. I have a fairly inflexible work schedule just because I have a patient load that's been scheduled out for a couple of months. But I am excited to be involved in more of the behind-the-scenes process and the day-to-day operations, and I think it's a good idea.
Great.
Yeah, I just want to say, my experience on being on a subcommittee has been very interesting and exciting, changes that we're, we're looking to make and the feedback that we're going to use from the community. And it's made me feel more a part of the commission. You know, like you're saying, Sarah, that, you know, to arrive once a month as a commissioner is somewhat limited, but if, once you're involved in a subcommittee, it just feels, you know, the, the involvement is much more rewarding.
Great. So Rebecca, why don't we, maybe if it makes sense by a show of hands, we could see who's interested in which subcommittees, and then we would need to, I think, separately engage Emily C. and Lucy to see if they have interests to identify how many people we can, we can put on which ones, and if we have to have a process to, to get to three.
Yes, and then I would also recommend that we amend the agenda ordering after we create these subcommittees to maybe add a standing item under committee reports or commissioner reports so that you have the opportunity for the committees to report out at each meeting, even if they're not bringing something to the commission for review, they can report out to where they are in the process and what they may be bringing forward to future meetings. And that would also require that of the three commissioners appointed, someone would need to commit themselves to serve as, as a sort of a chair of that subcommittee and drive the meeting process so that it remained an active subcommittee. So for, for someone, it may, may be more of a commitment than for other members of the committee if they're doing the work of planning for their meetings and trying to schedule the meetings. But that's one, one thing to keep in mind.
I think if it makes sense, Rebecca, what we should do is, once the subcommittees are formed, give the subcommittees a chance to meet, identify how they want to organize themselves, and come up with a proposal for the scope and charter that you then would work with the executive committee and staff to ratify, not to be over-process oriented, but then you could come back with both a leader, you know, a spokesperson for your committee and a charter that would be transparent to the rest of the commission and the community so everybody knew what you would be focusing on, spending your time on. But as a subcommittee, you know, you need to articulate that. But as a subcommittee, you know, you need to articulate that.
So should we start with, I mean, what do you think makes sense? Show of hands or just go by commissioner and what they're most interested in? What do you think Louise?
Oh, that, that's fine. We can definitely do it that way. We can just go by commissioner Rebecca. You could just call on each commissioner and they could say what they're interested in doing. We'll see where that nets us out in terms of number of people. Once we have Emily C. and Lucy weigh in. And then we may need to, you know, ask people if they're willing to trade off one desire for another. If we're, if more than three are interested in any one commission or committee, subcommittee. So Rebecca, if you could do that, that would be great. Thank you.
Commissioner Ellison.
Uh, so I, I sat on the programming subcommittee previously and was excited to be on that. And then frustrated when it didn't go anywhere. So I would look forward to being able to work with that again. And also have interest in the master plan.
Sarah, that's awesome that you're willing to do programming again. I, I, that's great.
Yes, actually, after Rochelle gives her presentation later on, planning for programming, you probably will all want to do the program. Commissioner Kenny.
Um, I too actually would be very interested in the programming committee, but also in the community engagement.
Programming and community engagement?
Yes.
Great.
Commissioner Miles?
I would be interested in master planning followed by community engagement.
Commissioner Fitz.
Um, I would be interested in continuing on the master planning subcommittee. And. Another choice might be the programming subcommittee.
And Commissioner Brown?
Uh, master planning, feel pretty anchored in that at this point. And I will fill a gap on either community engagement or programming if necessary. I'm interested in both and would be happy to be on either or none if there's interest from other people.
Thank you. And Commissioner Janowski?
I would probably say community engagement would be my first choice. But again, I'd, I'd be willing, I think we're pretty well, I mean, this is actually lining up. I've just been jotting them down. So we're, it's looking pretty good.
Right.
You know, depending what Emily B. and Lucy want to do. I, it sounds like I could probably fill in on community engagement. That'd probably be my, I think that's the most natural fit for some of my connections in the community and that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Great. So if everybody, I'm hoping everybody did their preferences sort of in rank order. Because that'll help us if we need to start to balance the number of people on each commission or subcommittee rather. We'll try to, as much as possible, hit everybody's first choice first. And then fill second choices in so that we have good subcommittee. Volume.
You can follow up with an email if you'd like. You want me to verify the, the orders that each commissioner selected.
I think I got it. We'll just have to talk about how we get Emily C. and Lucy's feedback. And can we finalize this outside of a commission meeting?
Um, yes, we can just report back as to what the, the distribution of commissioners across the subcommittees would be. But. I, I feel like we should do a motion to, to form the subcommittees. And then maybe direct the executive committee to work with staff to make the committee appointments. That, that sound like a fair process?
That's great. So can we get somebody to move to form the subcommittees? And delegate to the executive committee to finalize participation?
I moved to form the subcommittees and delegate to the advisory executive committee to form the committees.
I second that.
Great Rebecca, if you could take a vote. Thanks.
Commissioner Charlie is absent. Commissioner Ellison?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Miles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson is absent. Uh, Co-Chair Brown?
Yes.
Co-Chair Janowski?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, so moving on to business item six B. Discussion and possible direction to staff regarding the current Parks and Recreation Department fee schedule. Adopted by Town Council Resolution Number zero six two zero one nine. Two, review a proposed amendment to the current fee schedule resolution to add a rate schedule for before and after-school childcare. And two, direct staff to bring a fee schedule amendment to the town council for review and possible adoption. And three, provide any comments or questions to staff in advance of a full review and update of the current fee schedule. Tentatively planned for the September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. Rochelle, if you could have you summarize your staff report, please.
Happy to. Thank you so much, Co-Chair Brown and Co-Chair Janowski. And hello everyone. And Shannon, we need to catch up. We'll, we'll talk about that later.
I know.
I started, as you guys know, or maybe you don't, in May, taking over for Ashley's maternity leave. And one of the things that I was working on is trying to get the childcare facility to be able to function for the full school year. We were approached by the school district, as you guys know, after the COVID virus happened in the spring. We went through summer, last summer, and then in the fall, we were told that the Twin Cities Childcare Center was going to not function any longer. And the town, or sorry, the city of Larkspur decided that they were not going to provide that program anymore. And the school district was looking for a support system for students in school. Who either had parents who had to work and were essential workers or just needed additional help. That happened countywide. And that was actually a program that a lot of other cities ran. At the time, I was working in Santa Fel. We did the same thing, had some cohorts of students in our building doing after-school, I'm sorry, during school day support. And a couple of times had kids after-school as well in programs. As the school year changed and the students went back into school more full-time. Our program morphed into more of an after-school childcare program. So with the idea that we would continue that this year, if we could figure out, if it was functional for us, and we could figure out a way to do it. So when I started, of course, just a little background, I have a thirty-three-year career in child development after-school programs for the city of Santa Fel. So this was kind of in my wheelhouse of things that I felt confident that we could do. One childcare center sounded really exciting to me, I will say, after running seven for a lot of years. So I was looking through all of sort of what the Y does, what the city of Santa Fel does. What had been done here before and sort of used that as a jumping off place for trying to come up with rates. And then it became clear to me, not long ago, that there were rates in existence for the program that we ran here. The Kids Club Program. But that when that program folded in two thousand and eighteen, they decided to get rid of the rates completely. So that's why I'm here. I did some research comparing like programs or programs that I felt like would be more similar to what we're doing. But I also went back and looked at fees that we had charged before and sort of gave that a once-over. And did a three percent sort of cost of living per year to sort of get to where I thought might be about acceptable. So that's what I did. That's the rates that you see in front of you in the report, in the staff report. The two differences or the two things that we're going to try that we think will be really helpful to the school community. After talking to the principal and secretaries and sort of some of the families, is a before-school program. Apparently, they had contracted with a program that did before-school Spanish. And it was a five-day-a-week commitment. So it's, it wasn't a before-school childcare program. What we're proposing is just a childcare program, not any sort of learning. Necessarily like focused learning thing or anything like that. So that's a difference. We're also wanting to offer kindergarten part day for families who have children that are older. And need to get picked up at a different time. Thought, well, shoot, we could offer an hour in between when kindergartners get out. And the older kids get out to help families out with that little transition time. Um, and doing some full daycare as well. So what you have in front of you is based on a bunch of research that I did about sort of what we thought would be appropriate. I'm hoping that we can have some discussion about it. And if you have some input, that would be great as well. Because we do need to get some fees agreed upon at the next town council meeting. Because the program's going to start on, in theory, on August eighteenth. And so we need to get people registered and committed to the program so that we can do all of the other gazillion things that we need to do before the program starts. And with that, if anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer questions about any of the process or anything I did or how I did it.
Well, I think this is really exciting that we're bringing this back to the community. I know it was pretty heartbreaking when Kids Club closed. Uh, just a couple of questions Rochelle, on fee schedule, how do we think about the cost to run this program versus the fee schedule? Are there a certain number of students or participants we need in order to kind of cover those costs? And kind of minimum costs? And how would we handle kind of wild fluctuations on a day-to-day basis? If there are a hundred kids that show up on Tuesday and then zero on Wednesday?
Sure. So, I mean, that's a challenge, right? Part of the challenge that I feel like is going to haunt us a little bit is that we've never done it this way before. Because we're going to allow people to select days however they want. We're not going to lock anybody into paying for a full week. Or three days a week or anything like that. Because the feedback that our staff was getting is that that was too inflexible. And they felt like it might have scared some folks away. Always in childcare programs, you're going to have folks that want five days, right? So, but we didn't want to lock people into that. So I ran a few different scenarios based on real numbers of the program this spring. So during the program this spring, we were only allowed, we had limited cohorts for a while, right? So we only could have fourteen kids at the kindergarten time. And they had to stay separate in a separate room. And then because of the COVID virus cohort thing, we had to have fourteen after-school kids. So we only had twenty-eight kids. So I ran one scenario with, if we just did that again, like, let's just say we just had those twenty-eight kids doing those two things. It actually weirdly worked out that it was break-even based on how the budget looks for that program. Which is super random, like it was literally like ten dollars more expensive, which is crazy. Uh, it's my opinion that if, well, I mean, just my experience tells me that we're going to easily have ten kindergartners. And twenty after-school kids every day. I don't think that's, I think that's reasonable. But I ran it based on the twenty-eight, the fourteen and fourteen. And then I ran it based on what I think might happen. And then I ran it like, if this went crazy and everybody and their mother signed up for childcare, what would we get? And, and there's not a scenario that I figured out where we're losing money. Because the, the way to, right, the way for a program to make even is two things. You either have a bunch of kids or you cut staff. So I'm working with the staff on, here's the licensing regulations. We're not going to get licensed, but it's a good place for people to understand how the program works. Here's what the licensing regs say, that we can have fourteen kids for every one cert qualified staff person. And right now, we have four qualified staff people, which means we could have at least fifty-six kids easy. And we didn't have that last year. So it is a bit of like roll the dice, see how it's going to go. But I did run enough scenarios and I've been working with the staff on how to staff a program. So that we won't get in a situation where we're overstaffed and under-participation. Or over-participation and understaffed. And like I said, it's, it's new. So we don't, we don't quite know what's going to happen, but just based on the numbers last year, I feel pretty confident.
And then for people who participated in the spring versus who are coming back in the fall, what are the, the big differences in the program?
Um, I mean, I would say it's going to be definitely a hundred percent recreation program. My experience in Santa Fel is that we worked always really closely with the school, which is already happening. The new interim principal and I've been meeting at least and talking at least one time a week. But usually it's been a lot more than that because we have a bunch of other things we're talking about. So, I mean, I think that that's sort of what they're hearing at the school. Is that, you know, people, what people want is after-school recreation. So it's going to be in the same portables. But the program will be definitely more focused on, you know, doing arts and crafts. And the, the people that run the program right now are really into doing like engineering and science. And sort of bringing education into after-school in a way that's really fun, kind of disguising it, which is good. But if the school wants us to support, you know, them by doing homework help or whatever, like, we can definitely, that can definitely happen as well. It's going to be interesting because I've never worked in a place that didn't have an established childcare program. So they're sort of already tired of hearing me talk about what I think. Um, but they're really, really hungry for like sort of new ideas. And so I hooked them up with some people in the county that I know that also do childcare. So they can kind of bring back best practices back to the program.
And what, sorry, one last question. It's going to, any, any transportation from the east side, from the Cove over? Or is this primarily New Comans?
Right. So we don't have any way to transport students. That's, you know, obviously, we don't have any mechanism for that. We've been working with the principal at Cove to set up after-school classes as a way to bridge a little bit of that. But since they have a childcare program there, the main thing that they're hoping for from us is a before-school program. And so Erin is trying to work out some kind of program for them before school. Um, we don't want to push anyone out of business. So the program that's there is established and we don't want, we're not those people. Like, we don't want to come in and, you know, cut the legs out from under someone. But since the identified need for them was mornings and the program that's there doesn't want to take that on. It looks like that'll be a way in for us. And then, like I said, we'll be providing some after-school classes as well there.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? Rochelle, since last year was such a, an anomaly for so many reasons. And because the community has a lot of experience with and understanding of what Twin Cities provided. Can you talk about, and, and in your, and in your analysis, did you look at what would happen? If the Twin Cities enrollment were applied to your model? And I understand that they had a three-day or a five-day commitment. So it's a little bit different. But if the, the number of kids that were at, at Twin Cities Children's Center, could we accommodate that volume of kids? I think we should expect as we get back to normal that we might see an increase certainly over last year.
Well, I'm not familiar with specifically what their numbers were. Um, but I'm not as concerned about capacity. Our, if our buildings were licensed, those portable classrooms could be licensed for at least forty-two students in each room. Which means there could be eighty-four kids licensed in those rooms. It's sort of an industry standard that if you're on a school site, the licensing folks would also license you for the gymnasium. If they did that, we could have over a hundred and twenty kids a day. I doubt we're ever going to get there. Like honestly, I've never worked in a program that had a school the same size that had more than sixty or seventy kids a day. And even then, that's a lot bigger than you would expect to see. But, I mean, like I said, we have classroom space enough for probably close to seventy kids, I would say, at this point. And I, and the staff does want to keep, they really feel good about keeping the kindergarteners separate from the older kids for most of their day. So we would probably stick with that model just because that's, I mean, it's, the staff is going to drive the program if, if you follow. So I feel like that's a good call for them. And if that happens, we would still be allowed to like use similar spaces. And still be okay with how many children we can accommodate.
And did you look at their fees? I, I know.
I did.
Okay. And how did that, how does that look relative to what you're proposing?
So they were. So they were a few doll, they were like a dollar cheaper on a lot of things. The one area that they were so cheap that I can't figure out how they did it, I'm not trying to be cavalier, I'm serious. Is they for before school charged seven dollars for the hour. And if, if you didn't, cause you have to have two staff there, if you didn't get at least six kids, you're, you can't, you'd be not able to run a program. And the thing is, that is the most difficult time of the day to staff. The most difficult by far. Um, because people that are in school don't wanna come work for an hour, then go to school, then come back. Working a split shift is hard. Um, and it just is not cost effective, honestly, for us. Um, having the camp or the program director open and then come back later is not sustainable either. So the only way to really make that work is to have that fee be a lot higher than seven dollars an app a day. Um, so that's my, my thought is that fourteen is reasonable to be able to staff the program appropriately. Other than that, um, we're cheaper on almost every single other marker. They didn't offer a recreation day. I like to not have to offer the full day to everyone. So I, I'm proposing to that we offer a recreation day, which on the day that there's no school, that means people could just come for the school day-ish period. Um, it makes it more of just a fun thing for kids to do when they would normally be in school. It's not, it's not, it, it's just like it makes it kind of an easier thing. Um, and they didn't offer that, so I couldn't compare that. But everything else, we were below that fee. And the fees that I could put compared to, by the way, were from two thousand nineteen, which if you put, if you apply the three percent per year COLA um house living increase on that. Then we're at this, we're right, where we right at the same fee that they would have been charging if they were still open.
Um, if there are no other questions from commissioners, we'll turn it over and see if there's any public comment.
You know, you need a glass of water.
Okay, Rebecca.
Seeing any raised hands and I did not receive any emails, public comments on Setum.
Okay, then we'll bring it back to the commission for any further discussion on this item. There any other comments or guidance that the commission wants to give to Rochelle as she continues to refine this prior to taking it to town council?
Rochelle, I just wanna thank you for doing the analysis and um it seems very reasonable. Um, so I think you did a really nice job and it, I think it looks, it looks good. Thank you for doing all that work.
I would agree. I second that as well. And also having participated in Twin Cities for my children and now looking at this, is the flexibility is phenomenal. And I think will be very much appreciated by so many families who aren't needing the needs every five days a week. Um, and the split, the, the rec day versus the full day, I mean, that's great. I think it really caters to different needs and will be wonderful. Thank you.
I would agree. I think you're going to be surprised at how wildly successful this is going to be as people get back to normal. I think the community is ready to start getting back into some routines. And I think you're going to have pretty phenomenal enrollment and the flexibility does help promote that absolutely.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think the flexibility is perfect uh with people going back to work and um teleworking. Their schedules are just gonna be very different this, this coming year. And I think it's per, it perfectly meets that need.
Thank you, that's, that's what we're hoping for.
One uh thing that I think might be good, just feedback for you, I, having three kids who've gone through Twin Cities. And a lot of friends who have um had children there. One of the reasons they chose Twin Cities over other local programs was because it was a lot calmer. It was a lot more structured. The staff was really experienced and always engaging with the children. Where some of the other programs are more of a kind of a free for all. And there are certain kids that just really can't handle that. So I'm hoping some of that carries over in the program to fit that need. Because it really was the only, the only program that offered that.
I am, I mean, I, again, programs are all different. Um, I'm really confident in the, in the two Alexes who run the program, who ran the program during the year. Um, they really do have a skill and ability to sort of meet the kids where they are. But also um engaging with the school staff in a way that's really appropriate. Like I, I have a lot of confidence in them. I'm s, I'm in a way sad that I'm not gonna be here to see how it goes, but I told them they can call me anytime. So I'm sure I'll get, I'll get to hear some things. Um, yeah, I just, I think now's the time, if we're gonna lock this down, now's the time to do it. And um, you know, I'm really hoping that it goes well and I hope that it's a program that keeps building and is successful.
Is there any other comments or direction to Rochelle? And if not, can we get a motion to approve the fee schedule as proposed by staff uh to move ahead with a proposal to council?
I'll make a motion.
Second that.
Rebecca, can we take a vote?
And the second was Commissioner Masse?
Yes.
Thank you. Um. Commissioner Charlie? Um, Commissioner Ellison?
Yes.
Commissioner Kinnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Miles?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson is absent. Co-chair Brown?
Yes.
And co-chair Janowski?
Yes.
And before we close out this um item entirely, it is on uh the commission's annual list of um annual to do list to review and uh make recommendations to council on the fee schedule annually in the fall. To bring it to council in the late fall or in January, so that they can go into effect July first of the following fiscal year. Um, so you will be looking at the fee schedule again in totality. But we did put on here, if, if anything looks like something you would like to know more about, would like staff to do further research on. Um, you could bring it up now if you, if you like, um, now that we have the opportunity to discuss it. And staff can take notes and, and start working on, on those things prior to bringing it back to the commission for a full review in a few months. So if there's anything that you wanted to get an explanation on, um, now would be a good time to let us know.
So I guess that's back to the commissioners. If there's anything else on the fee schedule that you'd like more information on, please advise now and that will come back in September.
And apologies for joining late.
That would be, Charlie, welcome.
Welcome, Commissioner Charlie. Okay.
But she has been on the, the meeting since about seven PM.
Great. Okay, so I'm not seeing any uh hands raised or questions about other fees at this time. So can we move on to the next item on the agenda? Okay, item, uh, business item sixty is an overview of parks and recreation programming. And it's going to be a verbal report from Rochelle.
Well, here I am again, you get to listen to me rattle on again, awesome. Um, I uh, well, just so many things. So this weekend, I was, I live in Santa Fel. And I drove by the, my former workplace, Santa Fel Community Center. And they were having a quinceañera and there was two hundred and fifty people in there. And I went, holy moly, we're getting back to normal. Um, I think this is a really good time to have a discussion uh just with everyone about program areas. And sort of what things look like they might be coming back to a community center near you. I don't know if that's gonna be before I re-retire in September. Or if, uh, or when that's gonna happen. But I think it's worth a conversation about programming and programs and sort of sort of how that, how that affects the department. And um, I think, you know, in nor, in most recreation departments, there are a bunch of categories of classes. And I know that here in Corder Madera, we've had a really strong youth and especially youth athletics program for many, many years. Um, I mean, I, I'm not talking out of school when I say that when I was in charge of childcare in Cor, in Santa Fel. We would lose kids to Corder Madera's play, summer playground every single summer. Because it was all day long and it was very, very affordable. I think that there are things in our department that we're really, really good at. And I think youth, we are gonna have covered between after school, the childcare program, the sports programs we offer. I feel like that's an area that we, we know and we're gonna be able to handle. I will say that sort of in the past, um, there's been a lack of understanding maybe of how the budget works with how programs work. So just as an aside, um, it's industry standard that most recreation departments are supposed to be as close to cost recovery as possible. So when I was putting together the thing for the childcare program, I really did look at what are the real costs? How much do we need to pay for the portables? What are, what are, what are we on the hook for in terms of supplies and services? What is the staffing like? To try to make the fees match up with the expenses. So that's a thing that the staff here is learning from me. If there's gonna learn anything from me, one of the things they're gonna learn is about sort of budgeting and sort of how to make programs be as close to cost recovery as possible. The hard part is that the other areas of programming are more difficult to do that in. Um, we have, the other categories would be adult athletics, regular adult classes, senior citizen programs. Rentals of parks and building facilities. All of those things have hard costs associated with them. But there are things that we should offer. I mean, I, we opened up picnic rentals this week. I know we've been getting tons of calls about renting picnic tables. All of those fees that we charge are in essence to pay for staff time, park maintenance and all sorts of other things. The reason that I'm, that I wanted to be here to talk just a little bit about programming is because I feel like maybe some direction for the staff here would be great from the commission about what sort of direction you want us to get back to when it's time to reopen. We already know that the um, the intergenerational center that was closed here, that there's a big need for senior citizens programs. We've already been in conversation with the folks that do congregate meals, which I think is a really important service that we need to get back to. There's a lot of senior citizens who during the pandemic were by themselves a lot. And I worry about, are they eating appropriately? Do they have people that they're, that they're checking in with? Luckily Perry, who's right here on the call, has been calling and checking in with people. But I think it's one of the programs that we did that really affected folks in a really positive way. Um, and when the intergenerational center closed, of course, that leaves a hole of programming for them. So I, I just, uh, the reason I wanted to have this discussion and overview a little bit is to try to figure out if there's some guidance that you wanna give or some thoughts that you have about how to reopen and move forward with programming in a way that makes sense to the community. I don't live in this community, so I'm not really connected with sort of the needs. But just from being here for a couple of months, I'm kind of seeing my way through it. Um, the, these are the things. So I, I'm just look more than anything, looking for guidance. And if there's a way I can sort of explain kind of how I see things, I can do that. But I kind of really wanted more input from you about what you were thinking.
Rochelle, just to clarify um the ask to us, so, so we can be as um specific as possible. Is the, is the request that we provide you with input on programs that we think are prioritized to reinstate? Or areas of need within the community that would, we would like um Parks and Rec staff to look at uh filling?
I think all of that actually, but I just, I, I don't have my hand enough into what was happening before. With the exception of maybe the youth programs. Um, to be able to give good guidance to you about where are areas that I feel like are um needing attention. Um, I mean, it's, you guys have one of the most beautiful parks at Town Park in the county. And it's used, it's very, very well used. But I feel like there are some areas that, you know, that there's other things that we're not seeing. Um, that maybe could use some attention.
It was one of, I, I worked with Sarah on, on the, the programming subcommittee back in its original formation a few years ago. And um, one of the things we struggled with is really having enough data to make the decisions about it. So, you know, we had a couple of, of us who had thoughts and it was very much based on kind of where we were in our own lives or what, you know, the age of our children. So um, I know that we'll get some data coming out of the master planning committee about kind of that, that survey. Um, but I, I feel like that it's, that's what's been missing is like what's available out there and what are the gaps? And the other thing we talked about was like, what's the role that Parks and Rec is supposed to play? So we've talked about whether is Parks and Rec here to fill gaps that don't exist in other parts in the private sector of the community? Is it intended for kind of people to explore things in, in a non-professional way? Are we looking for things that are really focused on engagement? So it's more around activities that bring people together rather than kind of a solo instruction. You know, it, it could be any or all of those things. Um, but it kind of in absence of having some boundaries, as Rochelle, as you found, it's, everything's on the table. And then at that point, it's marching forward. So um, I don't know if we'll solve that here tonight, but perhaps as part of the subcommittee, that's kind of building some boundaries and a vision as to, as to what, what programming needs for us as part of Parks and Rec, I think would be really valuable and making sure we have enough information. So the, the, you know, the community engagement subcommittee is bringing, you know, going out and getting information for you and bringing it back. Um, could be a way to kind of leverage all the subcommittees to move forward.
You, yeah. It's, it's a hard situ, I mean, I, you know, we have data, cause we have a computer system that tracks rentals and all that. But in a way, because of the last year, it's sort of not really, it, it doesn't speak the same way as it would have if we had been open that whole time and we could really look back. Um, but I mean, I think it's a valuable thing to, with the, with the committee to start with maybe some data, previous data about programming and things that happened here before. So thank you.
So um, is this programming for the fall, for the spring? What are we talking about?
So I mean, I think just from the time, whenever we open back up, I mean, I, to be honest, I don't, I don't have a gauge for when that is. I know that the childcare program is gonna open in August. I know that after school classes on school sites are gonna start in September. Um, but I, but what I'm more concerned about are the, so that's for, and soccer, right? So like, I feel like youth is not, is a priority, cause it's already happening. But I, I feel like the guidance that I'm, that I'm thinking about more is what other things? What adult classes, what senior classes, what things are priorities to bring back? And sort of kind of that part of it, I think is where we're, we're sitting here going, okay, when are we opening? When are we opening? When are we opening? And I, I feel like we just don't quite know sort of what the expectation in the community is or I mean, I, we don't have someone on staff that does work with senior citizens. That's, that's a gap, like, we're gonna need to address that somehow.
Well, and to speak about the senior citizens, I mean, Perry has spent the last, you know, year and a half calling them and communicating with them. And having worked with patients in person since September, there's a lot of people who are, they've been alone. Now they're vaccinated, it's probably safe for them to rejoin a lot of things, but they're afraid to. Or they've built up a lot of anxiety about it. And, you know, could we offer some senior programs to help draw them back out? And, and, you know, kind of rejoin a group and interact with people in person, which is really, really needed. And maybe Perry's round of calls could be to revisit some of these people she's spoken with over the past year plus and ask them what they would be interested in doing, like what class would get them? Like what class would get them to come out? And if you could, you know, offer a class for vaccinated seniors in this and, and you had a group that were willing to do it. And then, I, I know this is above and beyond Parks and Rec, but it's an unusual time. How could we help with, you know, transportation and things like that? Like, is there, um, you know, part of that, could we hook them up with the, the village, you know, for rides and things like that? Just to try to get them out of the house where so many have been isolated for so long. And then one thing with after school programming, you know, families who have kids with, you know, families with two working parents whose kids go to a Twin Cities program or, or something like that. You know, I kind of assumed that the after school programs were off limits because I had no way to get my kid to that program and then to Twin Cities because I'm at work. But then somebody said, oh, no, well, chess, they can go and then they can get themselves to Twin Cities and they, they know who's in. But to really advertise those classes and to offer a lot of them would really, I think, be beneficial for the working families to know that those enrichment things are available. Because it's not well known.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I have to say, that's a challenge for us, uh, that's coming. Um, you know, and when you don't have things, establish connections, establish, it takes a while to do that. But when you just said that, I was like, oh, man, I didn't even mention that. But yeah, our staff will walk over and pick kids up from chess when they're, if they take chess and then come back to childcare. Um, it's gonna be rough at the Cove, but we are working with the program that's there to be able to do that same thing. So thank you, Sarah, for saying that. Appreciate that. Yeah. That's, that's great. I need to really work on making that connection. Thank you.
I wanna follow up too on Sarah. I thought your points were really good. And on the seniors, um, I agree, they have been isolated and some are nervous. But I think some are actually ready to get out. So I think Perry, you know, if you could work that in, asking them or trying out like on a pilot basis, let's go back to bingo. Like, let's do, I mean, like Pauline, Sweet Pauline was, you know, they, they, I bet you, maybe you have a way where you, maybe you do it for only vaccinated people. I'm, I suspect most of them are, or maybe you open up the doors so there's fresh air. But on a trial basis, maybe just starting slow, trying a bingo or trying a, you know, didn't you used to have a lunch with bingo? I mean, maybe us just starting, or the way you've done your book exchange. I mean, slowly drawing them back in and building up their comfort level slowly, I think, is, you know, asking them. But also maybe nudging a little bit. And I bet they would get pretty comfortable more quickly than we think. Because they'll see how good it feels to be back interacting with other people.
So, um, I'm just gonna suggest that before we have more discussion on this, we see if there's any public, um, comment on this. Because I think that we, we should have a little bit more discussion about this item specifically. But there may be some comment coming from some of our attendees.
I am not seeing any raised hands and we didn't receive any emails, public comments. But I'll, I'll keep it up for any raised hands if anyone in the audience.
I mean, I think this is something I was thinking we were gonna solve tonight. I just, I want you to know that we're all thinking about, well, how are we gonna do this? What are we gonna do? What's coming back? Blah, blah, blah. And I just was hoping that we could have some discussion around it. So I appreciate everyone giving it some thought and thank you so much for your suggestions too.
Yeah, and I also wanted to share that we have been talking a lot in the department about opening senior programming. And I think one of the challenges comes from that it was age friendly and the intergenerational center that did most of that programming. So Rochelle's right that now it's just about getting someone that's able to run it. Like, for example, the senior lunches, uh, we need someone with a food handler's license in order to begin that again. So we're just kind of like beginning these background steps in order to be able to open it to more programs. But, um, I'm really glad that, like Rochelle was able to bring this up and we can all continue to be able to chat about it. Because I, I agree. I think it would be really cool to bring people into the building. And, and I think seniors do wanna get out and start doing things again.
Yeah, I would agree. And I think that, um, Parks and Rec holds such a special place in the community and really can serve as a signal to the community, starting to get back to normal and come back together. And if, if you look at the couple of community events that we have had in the last three or four weeks, the Sunday concerts, um, in Old Corder Madera Square. And even the July 4th event that was, you know, put together with kind of a public-private partnership. There was great attendance and so much joy with people being able to come back and see people and have a little bit of freedom and opportunity to socialize again. So I think one of the things that would be worth considering as you think about how Parks and Rec steps back into a more, you know, normal or serving as a more central part of the community is what can, what is a big signal? Um, is there an opportunity to do some events that would be targeted perhaps at specific populations? But, you know, bigger, more celebratory, so not necessarily just slow stepping back in. But one or two signal special events, um, that, that could be done, that would be safe. Um, inviting and draw a lot of the community together. So it's just another perspective.
Thank you.
Any other, um, input right now? We'll obviously keep talking about this because there will be insights that come out of the master planning process and your programming subcommittee and your community engagement subcommittee will also be able to augment staff and help you think through these, these issues. Rebecca, do we need to take any specific action on this item before we move on?
No, this is just the beginning of, of what we anticipate to be a long conversation. And, um, I'm hopeful that part of Rochelle and wrapping up her interim work will, will get the programming subcommittee sort of off on the right foot and set them up for success and, and give them sort of a syllabus of what needs to be discussed and when. And, you know, looking at spring classes, when they need to talk about spring programming, how many months in advance do you need to prepare for that? Um, so that we're not talking about things at the last minute and that we're talking about things in a timely fashion that, that fits in a way that you can be positioned to offer those classes in a few months.
That's great. And I think we should continue to push the thinking and challenge each other and ask the questions because we don't have to fall back to what we were doing before. We should pick up what was really successful and look to do more and better and different and be innovative and try new things. Thank you for that, Rochelle. Okay, um, item seven, moving on, staff updates and commission reports. Um, start with the director update, Rochelle.
It's all, it's all Rochelle all the time. Oh, my gosh, are you sick of me yet? Okay, um, I'm back. Uh, senior outreach continues. Perry is, first of all, I don't know if you've ever heard her talk to seniors on the phone, but it is the cutest, funniest thing ever. Um, and she has relationships with these people. It's amazing. And they're so grateful for the check-in. So that's still going strong. She, um, Nancy has had some stuff happening at home, so Perry took over. And I don't even know, how many phone calls did you make that week that it was just you?
I think it, it was like eighty calls for a few weeks in a row.
So, so, you know, in case you're wondering, she's working really hard trying to get everyone back to, you know, chatting on the phone, which is great. Um, and we're still doing the puzzle book exchange. We're trying to figure out how we're gonna keep that going once we open back up, because it's gonna be difficult to have a functioning lobby and a book thing swap at the same time. So we're trying to come up with ways that we can do that. Um, it might not be every week. It might be every other week. We're not really sure. We're still trying to figure it out. But it's been so popular and been such a cool thing that we're gonna try really hard to just keep it going as long as we can. Um, Corder Madera Camp, um, so last summer, Shawna and I talked about it today. Last summer, they were kind of in crisis mode and we're just, like, just there to have camp and help some people that needed help. And this summer, we're trying to get back to a little more of what normal summer camp would look like. We both were saying today, I don't know that it's ever gonna be like summer playground again. Not that that's a bad thing or a good thing. We just can't imagine that it's gonna ever get back to that. Um, but the kids that are in the program are super happy. They're getting ready for Harry Potter Day or week or something's coming next week. And so I gotta dig out my Slytherin costume for that. So that ought to be fun. Uh, Corder Madera Children's Center is the name that we decided on for the after-school program. Um, and my friend Alex and I, who's the director, and I spent three hours on the phone with our friends from Repro, who are our software folks, learning how to make it easy for parents to register for days online and make sure that it all looked fine. And thank goodness that Alex is young and knows about computers because Rochelle, Rochelle would have watched that whole thing up. But, uh, we're getting ready. It's gonna, we're gonna have some new stuff. We're ordering some new supplies for new ideas the girls had. And they're, uh, putting a flyer together and a postcard, so they're really excited. The first week of school, there's a few events they're gonna go to. So to kind of push the program to people who might not know about it. Um, so they're getting re- ready right now to start in August, which is great. Um, we, Neil Cummins, uh, School, uh, at some point this year, uh, decided that they were gonna let us use two, the two portable rooms. One was formerly an art room, I believe, and I'm not sure what was in the other room. But there are two portables right next to the two that we run the childcare program out of. So, um, the school district moved all of their belongings out of both rooms. And now we just happen to have tables and chairs here. In fact, my office, if you could see, I could turn it around. It looks like there's a preschool in my office with all my colorful chairs and like, yeah, fun. Um, so, uh, we're getting those rooms set up so that we can have after-school classes in those rooms, uh, every day, which will help the school out because then teachers won't have to give up a classroom, which is exciting. And we're working on trying to get a use agreement together for sort of all the spaces we're using at Neil Cummins. We're also gonna be in charge of, uh, of renting the gym facility to CYO and Marin volleyball and all the other people that have used it forever and ever and ever. Um, but that's a really good way for us to make some revenue, honestly. Um, so we're, we're gonna keep working on that. Um, I'm not sure that you know this, but July is Park Make Life Better Month. And we've been doing an Instagram blast every day of different things, uh, that were on a calendar that Ashley made that I believe she shared with you a couple of months ago. So today we had one on there, but my favorite one is you gotta go on and look and see Perry and her dad going on a walk. It's really, really cute. Um, if you're not connected with us on Instagram, it's CM Parks and Rec. And then it's got something for every day. Um, we've assigned people to do days, uh, during the month. So there's all kinds of different shenanigans happening on our Instagram page this month. Um, we closed the Recreation Program Manager recruitment. Uh, and we got eleven applications. Um, Ashley and I have both looked them over. And we're not sure, we've been given guidance to do, like, pick six and interview them and see how that goes. So we're narrowing that list down so that we can do those first round interviews in the next ten days or so. We're hoping that that person is gonna start when Ashley returns, like, at time it so that it's about the same time. Um, we'll see. Hopefully that will work. Um, but we, you never know. Someone's gotta give notice. We don't know what's gonna happen. So we're excited to have that person on board for sure. Um, and like I said earlier, the picnic area rentals opened up. We've been, um, having so many calls for people who wanna rent picnic areas. We did make a slight change just for the next couple of months because of the drought and the lack of uh, ability to water. We aren't letting people, um, have jumpers in the park because they smother the grass that they're on for the time that they're there. And we just felt like with soccer season being as crazy as it's gonna be, we want the grass to be in as good a condition as it can be in. And we just felt like if we let people use, bring extra tables and chairs and easy ups and have jumpers, that it would make it difficult for us to keep the grass in good enough shape for soccer, which is a priority for us since it's our program. And there's like twelve or thirteen hundred kids gonna be playing this fall. So we, we're trying to minimize impact, um, while still renting spaces to people who wanna have parties here and, and that kind of thing. And that is all for my report.
Okay, great. Any questions from commissioners?
I have a question. I know we're opening up for reservations, but there have been massive parties going on in the park every weekend. With, uh, we actually saw a stage with a band. And so those are obviously, and easily, easily a hundred people. Um, they're, they're obviously not official. They're not good for the grass. So how are we going to try to preserve the park as we worry about, you know, the grass is getting dry? Is there a thought to not allowing barbecuing?
Um, well, I can speak to that. We do have, um, one of the code enforcement officers is at the park on the weekends, talking to people if they're doing things that we don't allow in the park. So I'm not surprised. I mean, Ashley was here, Ashley came through the park. And of course, there was someone with a jumper and whatever, so she called code enforcement. I had one of the guys from the police department come over and talk to me about what we're gonna allow and not allow. We're gonna be giving them lists of who is allowed to, who has rented a space so that they know um, who's gonna be here not renting a space and they'll know who to talk to. But short of that, honestly, those are kind of the two mechanisms we have to make people kind of abide by park rules. And there's not really anything in addition to that, that we, that honestly, we could really do.
I mean, Yeah, I'm happy to see people out again and using the park. It's just a fine line of protecting the resource and, you know, potentially avoiding some sort of, you know, fire or damage. And I know there's a lot of limited resources, definitely.
We didn't actually consider the barbecues. I didn't, I know, when we were talking about it at staff meeting, we didn't bring that up. So I'm gonna definitely bring that up at the next meeting just to see what people think about that. Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, let's move on to commissioner reports. Um, we've had, have two months' worth of town council meetings to get summaries on. But, um, June, Sarah, you've covered those meetings.
I did. I did not go in person, but I watched the videos after the fact. Um, the, the, um, the one meeting, and I think I watched them in reverse order on accident. Um, but there was a presentation to town council by Sofia Guerrero and Piper Harvey with Erin Dugan about Parks Make Life Better Month and, um, asking for a proclamation from the mayor, um, making July Parks Make Life Better Month. And, um, I loved seeing Lisa, one of Erin's, um, clients from Rec Inc. Came on and talked about, you know, how she was excited to be able to go and do things in the park again. And that was fun to see. Um, then they talked about, they, they, um, talked about their budget and how they made a change where they took sixty thousand dollars that was earmarked for dog parks and instead earmarked a hundred thousand dollars for basically like research on the bathroom situation in the park. Um, Fred Casisa brought up the fact that, you know, he kind of thought Parks and Rec wasn't doing one-off projects until after the, um, master plan was done. But the thinking is, is that we need a solution now. You know, Todd said he kind of wants us to look for like a short-term stopgap solution. You know, something like, do we get rid of the porta potties and bring in something a little bit better? Like the, the kind of bathroom trailers you see at festivals and things like that. So just a way to kind of improve the situation temporarily while we work on the master plan, get it finalized and come up with a more long-term solution. And he also said that, um, it seemed that using mulch for the dog park is a good solution for the time being for the next couple of winters. Um, and that they were thinking, you know, that would get the dog park through a couple of years so we could use that money to look into the bathrooms. Um, and then on the other meeting, there was some public comment about, um, ba- basically nullifying the, the new commissioners for the Parks and Rec Committee. You know, some people were upset about, and, and no names were named. Um, and they specifically said no disrespect to the new commissioners that had been chosen. But they were upset with the process or how it was handled with, with the, the interviewing process. Um, and the town council, you know, a couple of people spoke. Uh, Mayor Beckman spoke and Charles Lee spoke and said, you know, that they felt that the project was fair and that the interviewing process was fair. And so they went ahead and, um, voted to approve the new commissioners.
Okay, well, Sarah had all the exciting things happen. I covered the July 6th meeting and there really wasn't anything parking rec related. I still have one more chance though for next Tuesday night. So maybe I'll have something exciting to report next time. But, um, that was it for the July 6th.
Okay, Emily, anything on executive advisory committee since you're on deck right now?
Um,
We, I've got summer brain here, vacation mode. We did meet to just go over agenda items, but that was basically the gist of it.
Great. I'll give a quick report on the Town Park Master Plan Survey. We've had over 500 completed surveys, which is really phenomenal. We were expecting between 300 and 400. And our consultant has said that this kind of response is really phenomenal for a community of our size. So that was really exciting. And we had over 300 surveys started by non-residents of Cordera who participate in Parks and Rec programs. 100 of those were completed and the consultant is having his teams look back to see if there's sufficient response in the 200 that weren't completed to pull that data out and contribute to the summarization that they're going to be providing to us probably towards the end of this month. So the plan right now is to get that data and circulate it to commissioners through, through mailing prior to our next meeting. Since we will be talking about this, but we do not have an August meeting on the calendar for this commission. So we won't be meeting until September. There will be a formal presentation of the data, both to the commission as well as to the council down the road. So we're going to be using this data to help inform the development of the community engagement meetings that we're going to be having in the fall when Ashley returns. We'll be looking to conduct those ideally in person and we will be scheduling them so that we can optimize community involvement. There will probably be at least two and maybe more, depending on the number of people that want to be involved. We're looking to have one in the evening, perhaps one on a weekend. We'll look to have one on the, the west side and one on the bay side again to optimize participation. So more to come on that. Quickly on Town Park Plaza, I think I reported last time that the town council approved a $20,000 budget for furniture in meeting with the town manager. Most recently, about a week ago, a couple of weeks ago, we were given additional guidance around assuring that the solutions for furniture are both ADA compliant and can be surface-mounted to the plaza underneath the trellis. So that's caused us to need to go back and find additional furniture solutions. And that's in process right now. We are still hopeful that we'll be able to get a package approved through the town manager in the next two to three weeks and have furniture sometime late summer. We also, I can't recall if I reported this last time, but we did get approval to do a screen on the north side of the trellis, a pull-down screen that can serve as a movie screen. Cafe Verde owns a projector and they have put up a portable screen in the past and screened family-friendly movies on the weekends so that parents can come down and enjoy a meal and a glass of wine and kids have something fun to do. So that screen will be installed in the next three to four weeks or so. And it will be something that can be used again to provide family entertainment and another use for the plaza. Any other individual commissioner updates?
Yeah, I, I attended the Fourth of July event in Manki Park. I also worked as a Lions Club member pouring beverages. And the, the, there was really a good turnout of all ages. There was activities for kids, five different bands. And it just felt, I think people were so happy to be out and together. And anyway, it just felt really good. I didn't make it to some of the other festivities. I think there was a band in Town Park and maybe some music in the plaza. I don't know if anyone else maybe saw those, but the Fourth of July Manki Park was outstanding.
I would second that Fourth of July in, in Old Town Square was really a very well-done event. So applause to, I know it was a big, you know, private push as well as the public support, so it's great. I was also in attendance at the Sunday Night Music this past Sunday. Most of the summer I've been there and it's been really, really well-attended. This past Sunday, I took a video. It was overflowing on all sides. There was nowhere to sit at 5:15. So I think as we, is that kind of outdoor, kind of really great events, that kind of thing, making sure we have the adequate space and support to really make the community feel safe and engaged and, and ready to participate.
Great. Rebecca, do we need to open it up for any public comment before we move on, on the agenda?
Yes, we need to have public comment on, on every distinct section of the agenda. But, oh, there we go, there's a hint. We do have public comment from Patty Stolier.
Hi, guys. I go by the town band playing in Town Park. And it looked like there were no seats out there for seniors. And I know that it came up at the Centennial and it came up at other issues. So when you do have something out in the park, can you put a few seats and mark for our elders or something like that? That's my only suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Thanks for that comment. Okay, if there are no other comments, we'll move on to item eight, routine and other matters. Any discussion around future agenda items, things that people want to put on an agenda for September or beyond? Okay, we have the items for yearly review. So you'll see with August, there's no August meeting. All of the commissions and council are taking August off to give staff a well-needed break after this crazy 16 months and the hard work that they've been doing. So we hope everybody will take a nice break and come back refreshed in September. We'll get back together and talk about commission goals, the summer camp recap and the fee resolution discussion. All of those will be on our agenda. And town council meetings upcoming, August, again, no council meetings. I'm on top for September. Aline, you're on October and Alden, November. And then between Shannon and Emily, see if we can have one of you claim the December meetings. There, I think, Rebecca, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, I did retool this a little bit. I did retool this, this a little bit to account for the fact that there was no August meeting. And I, I didn't want to assign the, the new commissioners. Not too much work right off the bat, but I did put them both in December. And maybe we can split up with one meeting, going to one and one meeting going to another. We do anticipate having two meetings in December. Of course, that, that could change.
I'm sure.
At the moment, the anticipation is that we will be having two meetings in December. And actually, how, how has it been working out, having each commissioner assigned one, one month? Would you like to see something more like that where it's just one meeting? And we can split that up. We don't always have two meetings each month. But if, if that's something the commission was interested in seeing, not being responsible for a full month of meetings, we can accommodate that if, if that's something you think you might be interested in doing.
I, for one, think it's easier to know that you're on top for a month as opposed to trying to remember which meeting, which month, and splitting it up. I would vote to keep meetings, I mean, months assigned to commissioners.
Yeah, I like just knowing that I'm responsible for the one month and not having to remember specific meetings.
And I think we can always serve as coverage for one another. If you can't make a meeting, reach out and ask another commissioner. Hopefully, we can provide that backup for each other. Okay, do we need to, one more time, see if there's any public comment on our routine items? Rebecca, or can we move to close?
You can, you can move to close.
Okay, so our next meeting is September 27th. And I guess without further ado, I would wish you all a joyous rest of your summer. Do we need to actually vote to close or are we? Just figuring this out. Thank you.
You did a great job. Very nicely done.
All right. Thanks, everybody. We'll see you in September.
Thank you, everyone.